All right, next on the agenda, we're down to the action agenda. And the first thing on there is the North Carolina Board, School Board Action Center, which is a request for $6,000 for that organization. This, Bob Reinhardt is a member of this committee, has been asked to be on this, on this Action Center. And he called me at the last moment, said we could table it if we wanted to, to the next meeting. We're having some regional, state school board regional meetings coming up where we'll learn more about this. But we also have a lot of the information in front of us. So at this time, I would like a motion from the board either to table it to our next meeting, or a motion to approve it.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we table it. I know that we are going to hear about it at the regional meetings, because I saw it on there, and to learn more about it. If we don't jeopardize perhaps doing this by waiting a month, I would move that we table it, so that we hear some more information, and could discuss it, and decide what to do or not to do in a more intelligent manner.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Well, I did have a point to make, which I'm not sure.
Again, we'll be--
Tabling it, you don't really have a discussion, do you, Mr. Campbell? Okay.
And we'll be discussing it as much as you want to at our next meeting. So, all those in favor of the motion to table it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That was pretty quick. All right, next on the agenda item is the school lunch prices for 2013, 2014. There's a motion. Ms. Baldwin, do you want to, would you like to make that motion?
Okay, and it is slightly different than the one on the paper.
That's fine.
I move that we reverse the decision to raise lunch prices for the 2013-14 school year, based on the fact that a waiver exists that we are eligible for. Let me repeat that.
Oh, you start, okay.
Yeah, I'm making the motion that we reverse the decision made in June, to raise school lunch prices for the 2013-14 school year, and because there is a waiver, and we are eligible for that waiver.
Ms. Jackson, did you catch that?
I did, but look at the last part.
I think she just, I think she's skipping the last part of that motion.
You're striking the last part of that.
No date?
Right, I mean, we can say as of September 16th, if you want to add that. It was really the 16th, it was just a typo on the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion at this point?
I could start, since, yeah, I found out that another school district's already reversed their decision. That was Alamance County. I talked to Dr. Lynn Harvey, because the North Carolina School Board Association actually did a presentation on this at a conference this summer. And they talked about how lunch participation is going down, and I think you saw some of the figures tonight, that it's only, I think, sixty-some percent, I wrote it down somewhere, forty-one percent of the kids are participating in breakfast, and of course, it's free, but only sixty-seven percent, was it?
Sixty-eight, wasn't it?
Participating in the lunch. And overall, the whole state has declined three percent in lunch participation. And the School Board Association made a point to say that the working poor, this is really hurting those families who are not eligible for free or reduced lunch, they're sort of on the borderline especially. And, you know, we want those kids not to fall through the cracks, and to be able to participate in the lunch program. And I know ten cents or fifteen cent reduction, depending on the type of meal, doesn't sound like a lot, but it adds up. It adds up to $18 a year, even if you have more than one child. It's really, it's eighteen to $27, depending on the type of meal purchased, that these parents are having to pay extra. And these parents are counting their pennies, we all know, the economy's not recovering as fast as we'd like it to. So, that's basically my premise, this waiver was made available starting in May, that we could be exempted from this, because we have, I believe it's three months' operating expenses in an undesignated fund. And of course, you're welcome to get up here and help us with this, too.
That'd be great.
And thank you for what you're saying, Ms. Baldwin, and members of the board. I will share what I can with you. We, as you know, I started on January 1st, and was not aware that a waiver was available. Learned that in the past few weeks. However, I did not look at the possibility of lowering meal prices, because I was very excited that I was, I had walked back into the role that I had walked into, knowing that we were in desperate need of using some of the excess operating balance, which at this time is a .56. We are allowed to carry three months, so we have about $800,000. And in my presentation earlier, you saw that just desperately needed equipment was through, almost $300,000, rounding it up. So, not trying to get involved in your decision as the board, but would like for, possibly to share school meal comparisons, looking at our surrounding counties, Buncombe, Haywood, Henderson. Elementary prices were 210 last year, we only increased them to 215 this year, so we, going backwards a dime, would probably go back several years ago. And then we went up in the middle in the high. Of course, participation is the highest in the elementary, so that would be the largest financial impact. But that being said, I also want to go back to some of our accomplishments, and our accomplishments being that we're working with ASAP to support our local farmers, to provide more fresh fruits and vegetables, which do come at a higher cost. We are changing our biscuit choices from what I have called, and they know that I don't like them, a bag, a biscuit in a bag, which isn't a Mylar bag, heated, looks like convenience food. We're going back to a fresh baked biscuit with fresh meat protein, if you will, in the center, and wrapped. So, I am asking that we take that into consideration when a decision is made, sharing that. And I do know that Alamance Burlington did adopt that waiver, and also Cabarrus County adopted that waiver, and have spoken with the State Department, and I'm asking to use that money to improve food quality, food service operations, purchasing food service equipment, and bringing, getting back to the fundamentals with the program.
Thank you so much, Ms. Payne.
Ms. Payne, can I, can I ask you just, and, you know, certainly, we certainly understand the challenges out there with the economy. But you referenced the healthy foods, and moving to the healthy, and removing some of the items, and I think this board is rightfully challenged, and so we're moving in that direction. But I've also read from a national standpoint, that moving toward the healthier foods, there's a cost that comes with that.
That's correct.
And so, I'm probably putting you on the spot, but how confident do you feel in moving with the healthier items at this point in time? Do you feel like you're going to be able to maintain the, because a la carte, I think, brought in quite a bit of funding, from what I understand in the past, listening to child nutrition directors. And do you anticipate that that will remain the same? Do you anticipate that there will be a potential loss?
Dr. Baldwin, I expect a potential loss. We are offering 30% less choices than we were in the prior year. We have chosen to be more aggressive than a lot of our colleagues in the state, because we are in a community that is very health-conscious. We want to serve our parents, we want the perception of our program to be good. So, that being said, I expect a 30% decrease in a la carte sales. And I also know that we have vending machines in high schools, in middle schools, that they are very conscious that they are not on during mealtime, but they are moving toward a wellness plan at a different pace than we are. So that will also affect us, because some of our students can wait and buy things later in the day. And what I'm doing every day is looking and running reports every evening, to make sure that we are staying financially sound. As we, I don't want to sound like a renegade and say that I'm rolling the dice, but we are rolling the dice. We are rolling the dice, but we are trusting that with my management team, and our cafeteria staff, that we can market our program, and become community partners with ASAP, and anyone else that is interested in the child nutrition program, to get the support, so that parents are telling their children, we are the best meal for the best value entailed.
Mr. Chair, I would ask this board to not support Ms. Baldwin's motion, in light of the fact that we have been given this information, and it seems that we are making multiple changes, and they sound very good and sound, but I believe we need to be conscious of the fact that it's costing more money, and we don't actually know what the outcome is. And I would also, since ties the members of the board, some of you, most of you don't remember, but a long time ago, this board was in a situation where we were in the red, a long time ago. And it took the board, I'm sorry to use the same word twice, but a very long time, to position themselves so that we were in the black. And those board members at that time were adamant about us being cautious as a board to make good decisions, that we would stay in the black, and be supporting our own, our own equipment, our own repairs, and not get in a situation where we have to borrow from other funds to fund the school food program.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. Go ahead, Mr. Pliss.
Ms. Payne, what? I think you maybe referred to it earlier, but the counties around us, Asheville City, Henderson County, Haywood County, how do our prices compare to what they're doing?
I don't have Asheville Cities. I do have Haywood County and Henderson County. And actually, Henderson County is higher than us for their elementary lunches. Haywood, Buncombe run the same. So Henderson has gone higher on the elementary, and lower on the increase for middle and high. And in the, a nickel, we're a nickel. So we're very fair, not standing out. Two thirty-five, we have two thirty-five for lunches for high schools with Haywood and Buncombe. Henderson's two thirty. Buncombe Elementary, two ten for lunch, Haywood two ten, and Henderson two fifteen. So they distributed their increases differently, so on the average, we really are the same.
Could I ask a couple of questions? Did I interrupt? I didn't interrupt anybody, did I?
Please go ahead.
Your assessment or your analysis of the operating expenses and the things that are changing, based on the changes in programming, if you will, do you think you'll have a better handle on that by the first of November? Or do you anticipate that it's really going to take you a full year to get a handle on that? And the reason for my question is, I'm cautious, because of, I'm aware of, I wasn't on this board, but I'm aware of those days where we didn't operate like we needed to. We need to be sufficient, or efficient, in how we do those types of things for our constituents, and for our children, and faculty staff, et cetera. But the reason why my question is, if we don't know today, if you felt like you would know in December, would there be anything that would preclude this board, from after further analysis of where we are today? If we came, if you came to us at some point in time within the school year, and said, things are better, we are able to do better financially than where we are, I think today, I would be comfortable recommending to you to go back to last year's prices. And I've heard some different things, going back ten cents, you indicated that we're only five cents.
Right, five cent increase.
Five cent increase. I don't want to reduce to a level that's below where we were last year.
Right.
So, that's a long-winded, probably not very bright question, but can you--
No, it actually is, and it's a very fair question. And the reason I don't have figures for you today, is because we started feeding students on August 25th.
I understand why we don't have, no, I understand that.
So, I will use the same figure, so I can answer that question in November, because I use the same figures that every child nutrition program in the state of North Carolina uses, and we base our statistical data, and looking into the crystal ball, if you will, based off of October participation. So that's something that we could revisit in November. And then we also use March of 2014, we could revisit in April. And my hope is that I can use the projected increase to increase participation, and also to stabilize this program, so that we don't have to increase next year.
And I just want to clarify, Pat, that the motion is just to reverse it to back to the 2012-13--
Okay, so the ten cents.
So the ten cent may not be the actual number.
Right, that's taken out.
Right.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Then it leads me to another question, if I can continue, Ms. Chair. This may be an answer from Dr. Baldwin, or from you. The waiver, what does that mean? How did we qualify? What does, who's granting that waiver? And what in essence does it do?
And, Ms. Baldwin, if you'd like to speak to the definition of the waiver--
You can.
Okay. The waiver was in place for school systems that had an excess of three months' operating balance.
When? When is that analysis made? Because that, it's got to vary with every system in the state, because you get federal dollars on a different budget than when our budget is.
This was, the paperwork that I have in front of me is from the close of school year, which would have been when they finalized, this is actually May 2013.
So the, an excess of that amount at that time?
Correct, correct. So it is a snapshot in time.
Okay.
So I've worked with Roger Warren over the last few days, and spoken with Bernie Socia, because he was involved during the transition after Ms. Von Hensley retired, so I wanted to make sure that I was brought up to speed. And that excess cash has been allocated in the form of a spend-down plan, that Lynette Von Hensley--
Right.
--submitted to DPI, to the state, remember? Okay. So what I am asking, that is a necessary spend-down plan, because she was not spending, so the money has been there. She was not spending that money, she was not, as of today, Roger, if I'm not mistaken, fifteen thousand had been spent prior to my coming onboard. That being said, I have gone to schools, my supervisors are my eyes and ears, my cafeteria managers are my eyes and ears, and we have folks out there working with equipment that is, well, they're not working. So they're working around equipment that is not working, so--
That needs to be replaced.
Please, yes. Replaced and repaired.
I'm sorry. I know there was six hundred thousand, over $600,000 in the spend-down plan last year.
Uh huh.
Has, are you saying that only fifteen thousand was spent of that six hundred thousand?
Right, and right now, my excess cash resource is eight eighty, and as of today, I have, with the equipment needs, we still have about $500,000, and that is before we, I mean, this is from July 1st until today, September 5th, I believe, or 6th, 5th. And so that's before we even establish a regular maintenance. This is just emergency 911, please fix, so that we can work.
So you're saying we have $880,000 in excess funds, and you're, but you're planning to spend 280,000?
On immediate needs, on immediate needs. We can develop a long-term, this is a short-term strategy.
But the cost differential, where you're anticipating losing revenue, hasn't occurred yet. The time hasn't taken, we haven't had school long enough for you to--
True, that's right. That's right.
You've got to have some buffer there--
That's correct.
To be able to, and to be able to work towards what you anticipate is going to happen.
That's correct.
If it doesn't happen, then you'll wind up with some money there that could be either brought back to this board, asking for a recommendation to do X, or whatever.
Correct.
And I guess my last question would be, and I hate to, I don't like to do this, but this, I promise this will be the last question I ask, and maybe this is for Dr. Baldwin. I'm not, it's just the way I'm geared. I prefer for these types of recommendations to come from the schools and/or the system level, superintendent and/or his staff. Would you, or would you have brought this rec, do you recommend that this board adopt this motion? And if you're uncomfortable answering that question, don't answer it. But I'm going to ask it anyway.
Well, and the reason I ask, you're the boots on the ground that deal with this
on a daily basis, and have to analyze this and make it work. The gentleman mentioned the law of unintended consequences earlier. I've heard that and used that, and you and I've talked about that. I've used that for years, and that's always my concern with anything we do that's something like this. And so if you have a thought, Dr. Baldwin, either or, as it relates to that, I would appreciate hearing it.
Well, my boots on the ground don't include the boots inside the kitchen in child nutrition, so I've really got to depend on our expert, which certainly Ms. Payne is. And I don't want to detract from the merit of what Mrs. Baldwin's brought to the table, because I do, again, we've, we need to try to help our families out there as much as possible. But on the other hand, we've got to, we've got to have an efficient budget. Your budget stands alone. You're responsible at the end of that school year not to be in the hole. So my point, and my concern is, you know, I think it was very, a very positive bit of news, coming in here and saying, look, we are moving toward providing healthy nutrition out in our cafeterias. But I also have heard enough from superintendents, and have read enough from the national standpoint, in that what comes with being healthy, we all have to understand, and it makes sense, makes sense in our own home, when we go purchase food, is that there is a cost that comes with that. So how do we find that balance? In my opinion, I think you may have come upon that balance by saying, look, let's get the boots on the ground, let's assess this, come back to the board, when, again, Ms. Payne, when you feel comfortable in having the amount and correct data to make a decision on.
And I appreciate that, I don't have that, I can gather that in October, but just for, just one example, and I have been meeting with our vendor-broker community every, several a week, as a matter of fact, to have a comfort level with the prices that we're paying for food. One example is our whole-grain bread, hot dog bun, which we did not have today, and we are seeking other opportunities, from last year of a white hot dog bun, this year, whole-grain hot dog bun, 68% increase. 68% increase with our bread. So we're looking for another bread, or we've asked our bread company to revisit their contract pricing.
And that's not isolated us, because you're in a consortium, in a group of--
Within a cooperative, that's correct.
Cooperative groups, so that's being, that's not just coming to Buncombe, Canada. That price is being--
Correct, correct.
Any other?
Can I just make a statement?
Please.
I'm sorry.
You know, as many of y'all know, my background is in health. So I consider this price, this increase, more of an investment in our students' health. I guess I think of it more as a part of a preventative maintenance plan. It's a lot cheaper to pay the increase in a lunch than it is for parents to take days off of work to stay home with a sick child, because they are not getting the adequate nutrition that they need to get. And there's something to be said about the healthy fruit and vegetables option. And you're right, it's going to, I can't see how it could cost the same or less to offer the fresh fruits and vegetables, and make it where the children will want to eat them.
Right.
But I really feel like this still will help the community. You know, Dr. Baldwin, you were concerned about our families, but I think if you looked at the big picture, you know, in the big scheme of things, it will actually help our students stay healthier and miss less school, which then, of course, has the parent's ability to be at work. And I just see that as a, maybe an intended consequence that we'd like to have.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to close by saying that, I mean, I'm willing to table this until next month, when we can get financial figures, but I do have concerns of having an $880,000 excess while we're charging parents what I call a tax. This is essentially a tax on paying parents, depending on the meal, whether it's elementary, it's five cents, 10 cents for the middle school, and high school, and 15 cents for the extreme meals. Like I said, it's 18 to $27 more per child.
Per year? Per year, right? Was that--
Right, per year, per year, right. And basically, I feel like people are hurting, they can't afford school supplies, much less now we're seeing the decline in the school lunch participation for those families, particularly the working poor families. lunch participation for those families, particularly the working poor families. And I just cannot stomach buying more equipment when we've got families hurting like this. And I know, I talked to some cafeteria people. One of them said, well, they bought this steamer last year, this expensive piece of equipment, and we're not using it. We don't want to use it. We never needed it. So I really, you know, I'm really concerned about building up excess funds like this when people are hurting.
One thing about that, you know, the terminology is interesting because excess funds or spend-down, I mean, in a business world, you'd call that a capital investment. And I can't imagine a business not investing in the equipment that they're using to run their operation. And some of it is just semantics, but I think that's important. And when you say spend-down or excess funds, and I don't mean new lease, I just meant in general, when you use those terms, it connotes waste, whereas in a business world, you wouldn't say that. You'd say, I want to be investing in capital. And I see us as doing that. Okay, so do you want to?
So I can amend the motion that we table it until, would next month be enough time?
October would not be, Ms. Baldwin, because I need November day, I mean, I'm sorry, October data. So if we could look at it in November, that would give me a week to organize.
That would be great.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah.
All right. I have a motion for Ms. Baldwin to table it till November. Is there a second?
Right.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of tabling it, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Two. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Payne. You've been busy tonight. Oh, you're going to be back up here, maybe. I'm going to follow that up with the child nutrition procurement plan, which Ms. Baldwin asked that we move from the consent agenda up to the action agenda. And Ms. Baldwin, did you have anything specific that you wanted to ask about that?
Do we need a motion first, Mr. Chair, before we discuss?
A motion to approve. Is there a motion, is there a motion to approve the child nutrition?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second, Ms. Chair.
They're ahead of me. All right. Ms. Baldwin, would you like to ask your questions?
Yeah, and I so appreciate this information. I have to turn sideways now. I guess I was just curious if, you know, when I go shopping, I can buy generic brands and that sort of thing. And I didn't know if that's true when you're buying on such a large scale. I just happened to be in Sam's Club and I saw the bread. It's called Bimbo Bread. I'd never heard of this bread. And it was, it was more expensive than the generic that I buy at another store. And so that's why it piqued my curiosity as to whether, you know, we can, you know, purchase generic-type food as opposed to brand-name types. Because I did see this bread somewhere on.
Welcome back.
The list, sorry.
Welcome back.
Actually, Bimbo Bread is the company that bought Sara Lee, which has caused our Sara Lee prices to increase. So I learned a lot about Bimbo Breakers the other day. Probably more than I ever wanted to know. They have bought Dolly Madison, just several people. To answer your question, Ms. Baldwin, and for your members of the board, procurement is a, it is a year contract typically, and we do buy with a large Western North Carolina buying group. You cannot veer off of that contract just to purchase a generic item that's less expensive prior to the contract being written. It is the responsibility of the child nutrition director and her staff, his or her staff, and any cooperative members that they serve with, to work with vendors and brokers and negotiate pricing and negotiate product that meets the school regulations before that contract is written. Then it is, would be my job to do due diligence to make sure that we have chosen the healthiest products available at the most affordable price and find alternatives so that we keep competitive pricing open, so that when a bid is written, the specs are tight, and when a bid is released, the prices have been negotiated. And we are typically locked into those prices for one year unless we allow a market escalation, de-escalation based on increases. Does that answer?
Yes. And I guess, because I see pet dairy on here and I think in the grocery store, that's the most expensive milk possible. I mean, are they really cheaper than other milk companies?
Typically, any company, when they're serving the K-12, has money set aside because we are, we are a necessary evil, if you will, in the business world. They have, they charge higher prices in the grocery store so our margins can be lower. They want our business. There's a lot of social responsibility in being able to say that you serve the K-12 segment. So that's part of our negotiation.
And like Pizza Hut, we're buying pizzas already made. That's got to be really expensive. Can we make more foods from scratch? I mean, you're talking about being healthier, and to me, it's cheaper to make from scratch and healthier. And I just would rather not see a lot of these pre-made products that are more expensive.
And that goes back to my presentation where I said we are going to the higher quality, the meals made from, prepared at the site level. I have already met with Pizza Hut. We are moving away from Pizza Hut in the intermediate schools. Pizza Hut knows that I'm watching every move that they make. However, their price did win this year. So they did have the lowest negotiated pricing. But I'm watching to make sure that they are indeed serving the nutritious quality product that the bid specification has asked for. Also, to make sure that their drivers are clean, the vehicles are clean, and that we're maintaining safe temperatures. And we have brought back frozen, it's Big Daddy's, which is a school-specific. And when you, I don't want to, we don't have any students, so I can say this. School pizza is healthier than regular pizza. But you know, you don't want to say that out loud for marketing reasons. But believe me, we're looking at every angle. And this year, the Western North Carolina cooperative did roll over their bid, and I have asked that they not roll over their bid next year so we could go out and look for other distributors and more competitive pricing.
Okay. That sounds great. Pepsi-Cola, what are we getting from Pepsi?
Pepsi-Cola, actually, with the decrease in à la carte sales, we have lost some Pepsi-Cola business because US Foods is allowed, you want the competitive pricing. US Foods bid on the 12.9 ounce Gatorades that we're now using as opposed to the 20. US Foods was considerably less expensive. And we are, so Pepsi, and I have, we met week before last, they are losing some of our business, but they know that we are not going to roll over, and they have the opportunity to come to the table with competitive pricing next year. How that has affected us goes back to this excess money that I have because Pepsi is taking some of their large coolers and merchandisers out of the schools. They are not leaving us without, but they are doing a swap program. For example, Owen Middle School had a large double-door merchandiser that was provided by Pepsi. We will not be purchasing enough Pepsi products to justify them leaving that piece of equipment there. So they're going to give her a barrel with some ice, or I may have to go out. The child nutrition funds, we may have to buy some merchandisers. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I'm just curious if we're buying some of the USDA foods that are supposed to be cheaper. I don't know a lot. I know other school districts do this to save money. Do you know what?
Well, what that is, and it is, I don't want to say that it's a misperception, but that is money that the federal government gives us. Last year was 17.5 cents per plate based on participation. So they take our participation numbers, and we are giving us a set dollar amount that we can purchase USDA-donated foods. And yes, Buncombe County has a warehouse, and we are very actively involved in that program. And I got emails today like Grape Tomatoes. That's a wonderful way to get North Carolina grown produce. But unfortunately, with the weather, we're seeing crops, I'm sorry they're being canceled. I'm sorry they're being canceled. So as, but they return that money to our program and we're able to reallocate. So, and we actually just reallocated $80,000 to fresh fruits and vegetables for the spring.
Okay, great. So I just want to clarify that next year, you've requested that we not roll over, that your co-op doesn't roll over a bid.
Correct.
I think that's wonderful.
Correct.
I'm very happy with that. And I've heard so many wonderful things about you so far from your cafeteria people.
Good.
And so I just wanted to let you know that, too.
Good. I'm very committed to the students and to our employees and to everyone in this room.
Yeah, thank you for your diligence on this.
Thank you.
I believe this person, this staff member's initiation is over.
I'd like to thank you for your cooperation.
Certainly, certainly. Very glad. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Payne.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the child nutrition procurement plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Number two, I'll just, I guess I'm going out of order a little bit, but we'll go to approval of, is there a motion to approve board member training, which was on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion because I asked for it to be moved. I'm not exactly sure what to say other than.
Well, you, are you going to, you make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there discussion?
Well, I can talk about it if you want me to, since I've asked for the $20 reimbursement for the training and for, to count towards school board credit because I did have training from this group in the past, and it was counted as credit. And the speakers, we have the State Board of Education Chair, which is our Lieutenant Governor.
He's not the Chair of the State Board of Education. Mr. Kobe is the Chair of the State Board of Education. He's a member of the State Board of Education.
Okay, he's a member of the State, well, I'm sorry, I apologize. A member of the State Board of Education, our Lieutenant Governor. And it's about the Common Core. I've gotten several letters. We've probably all gotten them about people with concerns about the Common Core. I've heard DPI presentations about Common Core. I want to hear all sides of the issue. I think I value diversity of thought, and I want to see what this group of people, there's a Stanford University person there, there are other education professionals that'll be presenting about the Common Core and concerns. And I think it was today or yesterday, I sent you an email about New Hanover County, our sister, school population's the same in both counties, Wilmington, that they have just sent a resolution to the State Board of Education asking for clarification about different issues with the Common Core. So I think the more I can learn about it, the better. And I'll be happy to write a report and bring it back to the board.
I have to, I think all of us can go to and do whatever we'd like to do. My curiosity is, registration for the event is by invitation only. Is that accurate?
That is what the invitation said.
I wasn't invited. I'm not aware, unless somebody's going to tell me differently, that any other board member was invited. And it's, when that occur, I'm just curious as to what.
I have no control over, I don't know why they did it that way. There's a phone number you can call, and you could ask perhaps to go to it. I don't know.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah.
May I make a statement to that?
Sure.
Ms. Baldwin, I actually did make that call this morning and was told that it was by invitation only, and that they did not have the seat for me because of the invitation not coming to me. After going around several minutes about how they came to the conclusion as to how they sent the invitations out, I was told, well, it wasn't really a scientific method, but that it was from somebody that, you know, if people showed interest, that that's how they got the list. And when I explained to him that I was the new board member and perhaps my name hadn't been out in the community, but that I would still like to be part of this lecture, I was still turned down. And so I agree with you. I think this could have been a very interesting lecture to have gone to, and that's why I'm not in favor of spending taxpayer dollars of any amount to attend what is obviously a very exclusive lecture with a political agenda behind it. That's my opinion. It may not be the opinion of the rest of the board. But I feel very strongly that we not start this. It's a very slippery slope. This is put on by Civitas. I would be just as upset if somebody came to the board and said that they wanted to be reimbursed for going to a lecture put on by MoveOn.org. I just don't think that we need to start this slippery slope, as I said.
Yeah, I have no control over that. I know seating is very limited, and it's a presentation, you know, by our Lieutenant Governor, as well as, I think there's like six or seven other people. And I have no problem paying for it with my own money. I do know a precedent was set before when I went to the financial, that's probably how I got on the list, because I did go to their finance seminar, and Phil Price, the CFO for the State of North Carolina for the Department of Public Instruction spoke at that. So I do not feel like this is a political event at all. I think it's basically just trying to, you know, present different sides of the aisle on the Common Core. And, but it doesn't matter to me. I mean, I'm still going, I'll pay for it, and I'll still write a report and let you all know what I heard. And I don't know if they're maybe only allowing one board member per group to go because of the limited size. I have no idea, no control over that.
Which is why I don't think that as a board, we should support this. I'm okay with you going as Lisa Baldwin. Like I said, I encourage you to go. I wish I could have gone. But I do have an issue with you going, representing the Buncombe County schools when it is quite clear that this was by invitation only and very exclusive. And you can, you can Google Civitas and Common Core standards, and everything about that is political. And like I said, I'd say the same thing if it was on the other side of the spectrum. I do not think that we should go down this path of allowing board members to take taxpayer dollars of any amount to attend meetings that are political in nature.
Yeah, no, I said I have no problem with paying out of my own pocket because I feel like it's a worthwhile event to attend.
So are you removing this off of the agenda?
Yeah, I was.
Or we can vote either way.
Don't do my job.
You know, I mean, I just thought, that's one board member's view, but I didn't know if we wanted to vote on it.
Would you like, do you want to hear?
I can make the motion.
I made the motion.
Would you like to withdraw?
I'm happy to withdraw it if, I move, we withdraw the motion from the table and eliminate it, push it, whatever you do. I don't know what the term.
Well, I mean, it's just that this is the board procedure for approving.
Yeah. And I think, I haven't said anything about this issue, but I just think it's incredibly important that we be really consistent. And I was trying to think if there's anything, any meetings or anything that I've done that would fall on these lines or anything in the future. And I think, I kind of agree with Amy, so it's just different, exclusive at all. I don't see.
Sure. I had no idea they were going to limit people, that you couldn't even call, because I sent it to other people and said, call them, see if you can go if you didn't get an invitation. So I don't know.
So anyway, that, I mean, you asked for the board member.
I will withdraw the request if that's the best thing to do.
All right. So there's a motion from Pat to.
I'll withdraw the motion. I'll make the motion to withdraw the motion. Is that correct terminology?
You can simply withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw the motion.
If Amy agrees.
Whoever seconded it would, against agrees.
I agree with it.
And the request is withdrawn, so we're done. Okay. Thank you all. All right. AB Tech, AB Tech Community College Board of Trustee reappointment is the next item that has been moved from the consent agenda to the action agenda.
And I would move that we make this appointment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, please. Is there a discussion?
I'm sorry, would you please repeat the motion?
The motion from.
My motion is that we approve this appointment, or reappointment, I guess is.
Okay.
AB Tech Community College Board of Trustee reappointment.
Right, and I had requested, Dr. Baldwin said that Mr. Campbell would address, my questions were about the process for choosing these appointees, and I had asked if it was, this was an Asheville City School appointee, and were we just concurring? Or was this a Buncombe County School appointee to the AB Tech Board? Did you get the list of questions, Mr. Campbell?
Absolutely, be happy to address it. The statute is a little unusual. What it says is that if there's more than one Board of Education in a county that would make appointments to a community.
of Education in a county that would make appointments to a Community College Board, that each school board has one vote. So, that is what the statute says, is that each Board is able to vote at that point. The procedure, going back, I think, a very long time, and usually not even involving legal counsel, was for the Boards to alternate. And in fact, currently on the Board, Richard Hurley and Bill Hart were appointments from this Board, and Dr. Don Locke and Dr. John Parham, who is up for reappointment, were selections of the Asheville City Board to serve on the AB Tech Board. It is up to the Boards of Education as to how they want to structure that, whether they want to have a process. I know that it is done across the state, all over the map. Some county Boards of Education will actually solicit interest, or have an application process. A lot of places, it's simply the, there's informal discussion, and someone brings forward a name, some places, they may even ask the Community College, you know, are you looking for a certain type of trustee, somebody who's in healthcare, somebody who's in banking, somebody with legal experience. So, the statute does not give any guidance, and it's completely up to the school Boards, how they choose to structure it. The way it's been historically done is the two Boards have alternated and respected each other's choice. Since the statute does say that each Board gets a vote, it would be appropriate for this Board to vote, even though Dr. Parham was the suggestion and the selection of the Asheville City Board at that time. You could, at a later date, have some discussion about a process, I will let you know that your appointments are not up until 2015 and 2016. So, there's really nothing imminent as far as an appointment to the AB Tech Board. Again, it's something you could discuss a process, it's completely up to you, but that's why it's on your agenda tonight to vote.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to reappoint, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. So now, we move on to the consent agenda, and there are the minutes from open session from August 8th, closed session, August 8th, personnel report, student transfers, advisory council meetings, approval, the Board Member, I know we've already done that, income, middle school, use of capital outlay, and policies of approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move...
Can I?
Oops, I'm out of order.
Well, let me just, you're not, but let me just clarify one thing. Policies for approval, there seems to be a lot of energy around that, and the way this is presented is that this is the censure of a Board Member as part of this policies for approval, and I want to make sure that everybody...
Can we pull that off now? I mean, I didn't realize, it was sticking out, it's not indented, so, I don't know, I didn't notice. And do that separate?
And I think, I mean, I think it would be, there's obviously a lot of interest about that, and I think it would be good to have that discussion. And I personally didn't capture that, so if it's okay with the Board, if we can have that discussion, and someone will pull that out, if the Board wants to...
Would it be appropriate to pull it out and go ahead and, since you've just, you've just mentioned all of the consent agenda items, go ahead and take a motion and a second on that, and then do the 2118 after that, would that be appropriate, Mr. Chairman?
Is that the will of the Board?
That's fine.
Is that a file with everybody?
That's fine.
All right, so...
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Will you let me do what I was gonna do?
Please.
Thank you. I'd like to move approval of the consent agenda, with the exception of the bullet that says policies for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, moving on to the next one, which is the Board Operations Policy Code 218, censure for Board Members, may I have a motion, please?
I move acceptance of policy 218, I apologize, censure of Board Members.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Does there happen to be any discussion?
I would, just to clarify, because I had some people ask me, I did part of a sentence a month ago in my questions to Mr. Campbell about this policy, and I voted against it, and I'll vote against it tonight, and I'll tell you why. I'm in agreement with the concept, and I'm in agreement with the thought behind it, but as Mr. Campbell pointed out when I asked him a month ago, all of these things that are now in writing, we could do already. We didn't need it written down, and I'm just not a real big believer in, it's something we could already do, putting it down in writing and putting it on paper. So, I'm in, I'm supportive of the concept. If I decided tomorrow, or next month, and this wasn't voted on and passed tonight, that there was something that I felt strongly enough about to bring to the Board to censure any of us, I could certainly do it. There's a, there's enough court case and enough history of these types of things in other places that it can be done. I'm just not, I'm an old country boy from Georgia, I'm just not in favor of putting it down in writing, just simply to put it down in writing.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to bring up that this is pure politics, the censure policy. In the ultimate hypocrisy, Ms. Churchill just stated that she wouldn't vote for the Civitas training because it was political. Yet she has seconded the motion for the censure policy, and I don't know if she'll vote for it, but it's pure political, it's pure politics, and the only reason for this type of policy is to impugn the reputation of a Board Member, to intimidate, to keep people, to stifle questions and free speech of important issues, and to use this to possibly impact next year's elections. If somebody on this Board were threatened with censure, if this passes, they would then have the standing to challenge the censure policy as a matter of law, that means they could file a lawsuit, and that could cost Buncombe County Schools a lot of money, and I don't think any Board Member here would want to do that. But we already have a policy with legal teeth in it. Policy 2116 is for the removal of a Board Member. And this is very specific, it's from the general statutes, that you have to have been, committed a felony, you have to willfully and corruptly omit, neglect, and refuse to discharge any of the duties of office to be removed. A censure policy has no legal teeth whatsoever, it's just a slap on the hand. Again, it's a political move. This is not going to help our Board relations, to pass this, it's not going to help our image in the community, our good name of Buncombe County Schools, again, as one of our speakers said, we may be featured in the Drudge Report. Because it makes no sense to me to do this, this is a way to justify a witch hunt, basically, for a Board Member that you disagree with, and to suppress the minority report on the Board.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin, anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have a, kind of, I'll let this...
Well, I mean, I'm in agreement with Mr. Bryant, I mean, you can censure, any political body can censure any Member at any time, you don't have to have a policy. To me, this policy just gives you a procedure by, you know, if one of us wanted to do it to anybody, it gives us a procedure that we all have to follow, but that's...
Which is already given in the law.
Which is already given in the law.
Ms. Churchill?
Well, Dusty alluded to what I was going to say, the reason that I feel that we need this policy is that it will keep us on task to make sure that if we choose to censure somebody, that we are doing it in a fair manner, and so that it isn't a witch hunt. I, just as one of the speakers said, you know, this could be used for any Board Member, which, that to me, does not sound like a witch hunt, that sounds like a fair and reasonable way to deal with somebody who has obviously done something against the ethics policy that they have sworn to abide by, and maybe it's not enough to remove that Board Member or arrest that Board Member, but it's enough to say, as a Board, we are not going to tolerate this kind of behavior. But it's not to stifle discussion. I feel like we could probably just play back the tape from last month, and, you know, all the reasons that I gave last month are still valid this time around. I just feel like, yes, it's always been there, the ability to do it, this is at least a way to do it fairly, and allows us the opportunity to give a best practice for the best outcome without any kind of political snarkiness behind it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Franklin?
It is not unusual that this Board has policies that restate things that are stated in the law. And that goes to curric, I mean, runs the gamut, I could list all of them. So, the argument, I mean, what Mr. Bryant has said is true, it is given, the right is given to us in the law. If, in the event that we pass this policy, we have just restated in a very succinct way what the law has given to us, and it is now our policy, as well as giving us the authority by the, by the laws in the state.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but the censure policy is not a general statute, I mean, censuring Board Members is not anywhere in the law. And in fact, it's an affront to the voters, because this is the voter's job, and they do this at the ballot box, that's where they censure Board Members. And it would be a very elitist thing for us to do, to presume, to take over the job of the voters, and to go in and basically sanction a Board Member, just to silence them, and to set them up for defeat in an election. The voters didn't elect us to be rubber stamps, or to vote as a gang, we need and want independent transparency.
Are you announcing tonight that you're running for reelection next year?
No, I'm not sure why you're singling me out. There's an election next year, Pat.
I haven't heard anybody announce that they were running for that.
Hey, excuse me, could we stay on the topic, which is the censure?
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
I know, I know.
I'm talking about that we weren't elected to vote as a gang, we were supposed to have independent thoughts, we're supposed to be critical thinkers, we should want transparency. This policy is to prevent transparency, because it discourages the Board Member from bringing up issues that someone may disagree with and decide they want to censure you over.
I see this, I mean, I'm all for difference of perspectives, I think that's incredibly important in a Board, any Board. I don't think that a Board Member, however, should be able to do anything they want to do, they shouldn't be able to provide confidential student information, they shouldn't be able to discuss personnel. And we need to have rules in place that allow us to at least acknowledge that that's been done. And this policy does not limit debate or difference of opinion, I mean, it refers to our ethics, it doesn't refer to anything besides our ethics, and that we have to follow the ethical code. And so, I'm going to be voting in favor of that, and I think it's important to have rules in place, and I understand what Pat's saying, and we could do this anyway, but I think it's only the fair thing to do, is to have a kind of a procedure for that. And I don't anticipate this Board doing this every time there's a disagreement, I mean, if we did that, it would lose credibility, and none of us want to lose credibility. I see this as something that's an extreme, something major has happened, some kind of action that we, as a Board, don't feel comfortable with, and yet, we don't really have a good way of reacting, and this is one way that we could react to that. Mr. Campbell, do you have anything to add in terms of a legal framework?
Mr. Vice Chair, Board Members, I think the interesting thing is that what is going on right now is a fantastic ninth grade civics lesson. I often have teachers tell me that adults seem to worry over things that students see pretty straightforward and pretty clearly. The, everyone is correct about everything they have said from their perspective. Let me talk just briefly what the policy is intended to do and what it's not intended to do. First of all, censure is not a general statute, that is correct, censure is from common law, you can probably find censure in English courts, if you're a student of history. Censure is the expression of a majority of the Board, that what a Board Member has done is inappropriate. You can read that as a disagreement of viewpoints, but that's not typically what censure is intended to be. In fact, censure obviously would have no purpose if the, there's no reason for the majority to constantly criticize the minority, because the majority has all the power. Censure is intended for when a Board Member does something that a majority of the Board feels like should publicly be condemned. Recently, a North Carolina Mayor faced possible censure for DWI and using, I think the accusation was either a credit card or some kind of public funds to purchase alcohol. So, there's, there's an example that has nothing to do with what you Board Members are kind of discussing and talking about tonight, that was a censure of that publicly elected official. So, censure is nothing new, and I don't see this as a newsworthy topic, because it's something that's been available out there. What the policy is intended to do, whether you want to have a policy or not, is two things. One, make it an orderly process, so that there is something to guide you as a Board, if it ever were to be an issue that came before you. And second of all, and this hasn't been pointed out by anyone, it requires a supermajority, it requires five members of the Board, without a policy, four members of the Board could choose to censure a Board Member. It requires a second to even get discussed, and the Chair can choose not even to put one on the agenda, if the Chair feels like it's politically motivated, or that it has something to do with free speech, rather than an action by a Board Member. Then certainly, a majority of the Board could vote to put it on the agenda. So, really, a censure is going to take, you know, in many instances, four Board Members to even get it on the agenda, and then five for it to pass. So, that's the intent of it. Again, whether you choose to pass it or not is your decision, but I want to make it clear that it is not a censor policy. In fact, if everyone will read their dictionary, suppressing speech is to prevent it from happening. This is to, more directed at conduct, and potential conduct, and the Board condemning that conduct. This policy does not and cannot prevent any of you from expressing your viewpoints on an issue through normal Board processes, so I just wanted to make that clear. If you don't pass the policy, we still have a requirement of an agenda coming before the Board, that there being advance notice of what's on the agenda, things being provided to the Chairman, so in my opinion, a censure is still not something that would be appropriate for a Board Member to bring to the attention of the Board at a Board Meeting without advance notice to all Board Members, that's only fair. The one thing that I think is so important about this policy, again, that hasn't been pointed out, it's designed so that if someone does feel like a Board Member should be censured, that Board Member knows ahead of time, that Board Member has an opportunity to prepare or respond if they want to. So, it's all about orderly process, and not about a topic that's been around since before colonial times.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Campbell, as well? Mr. Campbell is the author of this censure policy, could you clarify for me what Mr. Craig just said, that this censure policy was necessary if a Board Member provided confidential information, or gave out confidential information? Isn't there already a law that says you can't do that, and...
Well, I had two issues there in your question, first of all, I didn't hear him say it was necessary to condemn that, because no, there are already laws in place about many of the things that are in your ethics policy, such as disclosing confidential information...
What about disclosing personnel information?
Students or personnel, so that's already covered. Again, the censure policy would be the Board's expression, and it says in the policy that that's separate than any other processes. So, let's take a hypothetical example, that a Board Member has actually violated a law, well, that violation of law would follow the general statutes, and presumably, if it was a criminal law, the DA would be involved, but at the same time, the Board would not be permitted or prohibited from censuring the conduct of that Board Member. And again, you don't need the policy to do that, so your question's correct, this policy is not necessary for anything.
All right, we've had a lot of discussion on this in the last two meetings. All in favor of the motion, let me read it, to approve the policy 218, censure of Board Members, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, I have two opposed, the motion passes. All right, announcements in future meetings, the Board of Education will have their regular meeting Thursday, October 3rd, at 6:30, and there's going to be a countrywa, country, countywide, countywide adva, I'm getting tired, a countywide advisory council meeting at Reynolds High School on October 15th at 6:00 PM. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Craig.